Perfect.
I know where it should go. Your backyard.
Okay, hello and welcome, everybody. I'm calling the Monday, April fourteenth, twenty twenty-five Planning Commission Meeting to Order here at six thirty P. M. Tonight's meeting is being conducted both in person and online. Members of the public may attend in person, or the public may also watch this meeting online at Burnsville dot Burnsville MN dot gov slash meetings. That's the city website, Burnsville MN dot gov slash meetings, or view us on Comcast Channel sixteen or Channel eight fifty-nine. The public can also join us on Zoom by going to zoom dot U S slash join, and more information about that is available on our meeting webpage and in the agenda. So, speaking of the agenda, that's our first item, is the adoption of the agenda. Are there any changes to tonight's agenda from commissioners? Any changes from staff? Seeing none, I'll entertain a motion to adopt tonight's agenda.
I'll make said motion.
Moved and seconded, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Motion carries. Item number two, approval of the minutes from our last meeting, which was on March tenth, twenty twenty-five. Any changes to the minutes from commissioners? Any changes to the minutes from staff? Seeing no changes, I'll entertain a motion to approve the minutes from our March tenth meeting.
Motion to approve.
It's been moved and seconded. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. And now, we're on to our first public hearing. This is the application of Eden Baptist Church for a planned unit development amendment to construct a nine thousand eight hundred and thirty-three square foot addition at thirteen thirteen Highway thirteen east. Presenting will be Mike Moroslaw, our planning manager.
All right, good evening, commissioners and chair. I am filling in for Kevin, he couldn't be here tonight, so I'm doing, I'm gonna be presenting. Other duties as assigned. All right, as Chair just said, the subject property is located at one three, one three Highway thirteen east. It is Zone B three, general business and guided as bus, business, retail, office, and the twenty forty comprehensive plan. Little background, the subject site is five point nine three acres. Fun fact, it used to be the former City Hall way back when, and it was remained society before the current use acquired the site. They, when the church acquired the site in two thousand nine, they remodeled the the existing facility and then an expansion in phases. They got their approvals in two thousand nine, the approvals include a comprehensive plan amendment, a P U D, a rezoning, final plat, all kinds of good stuff back then. And now, in two thousand seventeen, the applicant did come forward of another application for an amended P U D to add a picnic shelter on site on the eastern part of the site. And then, the proposal in front of us tonight is to construct a full-size gymnasium and associated kitchen. The proposed gymnasium will serve as a multipurpose fellowship hall with a kitchen facilities to accommodate the church activities, games, and meals. And is not intended to actually increase people visiting the site. So, again, here's the site plan in front of us here on the screen, and I'm just gonna turn my pointer on. And so, as you can see here on the left side of the screen is the air photo. You can see as this was phased, this was original City Hall. This was the first addition, and now, the third addition will be here on the subject, the open space here. As you can see, it was planned for, and when they went through the original process, this never got approvals for it while we're here tonight. On the right side of the screen is the proposed addition on the east side of the building. The proposed design of the structure is a precast walls that will match the existing worship hall and materials and in color. The proposed height is thirty-two feet, similar height as the overall church as well. The inside of it is a full-size basketball court. We like to call it like the high school gymnasium, is what we've been using as staff. We'll have a partition wall down the middle here to be able to separate the gymnasium from like, if you want to do a banquet there, something like that. The, there is a seating chart on here to show how it could be used as a dining facility for a banquet. The occupancy of the space is four hundred and two persons. The site plan on the screen here shows seating capacity of three hundred and twenty, I believe. This general area highlighted in yellow here on the screen is the proposed kitchen. And then, there'll be a storage area at the back of the building, and two restrooms added as part of the proposed addition. Some of the P U D benefits, as part of this application, the applicant is proposing to do additional landscaping on site that exceeds ordinance requirements. There will be eleven trees that were removed as part of the proposal to allow for the addition to be constructed, and there'll be thirteen trees added, three conifers and ten deciduous trees. Orange requires twenty-five percent of the green space to, twenty-five percent of the site to be green space. The proposed site plan has sixty percent. As previously mentioned, this proposed addition was thought of back when the original approval process. And then, the building perimeter landscaping requires thirty percent, and the proposed building has sixty-nine point four. Here is the proposed landscaping plan on the screen. You can see the foundation plantings along the building, base of the building, and then additional plantings around the stormwater pond. The stormwater pond will need to be increased in size to handle the additional impervious surface as part of this proposed project. However, a lot of the existing trees along the Highway thirteen will remain and parking lot. So, the applicant is requesting flexibility to reduce parking. The current parking lot has a hundred and fifty-six stalls in it. The proposed addition requires a hundred and one, which is the seating of one seat per every four persons. Maximum occupancy, or a hundred and one stalls in this case. The applicant did submit a proof of parking plan that shows eighty-six stalls. As previously stated, the applicant does not intend to increase the occupancy of the building or the size of the congregation, just to provide a different many on church. So, this, the church has had a long stance of serving up to a three hundred and fifty persons at the church. So, in the event they ever had grew above that number, they would look at different locations. So, the parking on site has always worked for their use. And at the same time, as part of this proposal in front of us tonight, the, if the gym is an activity in there, the church will not. They're providing the offset to make sure there's ample parking on site. So, if there's a wedding, and then they go into the banquet hall afterward, the gymnasium to hold a banquet afterwards, there'll be parking on site to support that. So, the proof of parking is proposed on the east side of the property, there's eighty-six stalls. There's number two conditions that we'll go through at the end here that will require when the parking would go in. Since the parking on site is supporting the use as is, we feel that the a hundred and fifty-six stalls that are currently out there do work as currently is. The only concern that staff has as is reviewing this application, what happens if the ownership of the church changes? Or the use changes to, maybe there's a daycare on site or some kind of school? That's what more or less the condition is. If the occupancy changes, the proof of parking has to go in, or other accommodations have to be made. But, from the narrative provided by the applicant, the conversations we've had, we do support the proposed flexibility to use the parking as is currently on site. So, the proposed the proposal does not have any impacts adjacent properties. The gymnasium will be an asset to the community. The addition is compatible with the existing building, and a well-designed plan will will be meant to improve the site and better provide options to the church and the community. The recommendations on the screen, staff recommends that the planning commission recommend to the city council approval of the planning development for a nine thousand eight hundred and thirty-three square foot addition to the existing building located at one three, one three Highway thirteen east, subject to the conditions that are written next. Condition one, the conditions of the previously approved P U D shall remain in full force and effect, except for those modified by this application. The proposed project shall be completed in accordance with the submitted plans and amended by the conditions of approval. Any significant changes to the plans as determined by planning staff shall require review and approval by the planning commission and city council. Number three, prior to issuance of a building permit, planning staff shall approve a final landscaping plan. We like to include this condition in here, just in an event, you have to relocate trees as part of the development process. You go on there, and they start construction, hey, we gotta move a tree, well, it'll provide that flexibility in there. Number four, this has to do with the parking, the proof of parking, prior to issuance of a building permit. Oh, I lied. This is landscaping. Prior to issuance of a building permit, a letter of credit or cash security in the amount of not less than one hundred percent of the total estimated landscaping value should be submitted, the landscaping financial security should be held for two growing seasons to ensure that the plantings on site take. Number five, in the event the building permit, in the event that a building permit is submitted, which increases the maximum occupancy of the building, the submitted proof of parking shall be instructed as part of the building permit's middle. So, again, when, if a daycare were to go in, there are change in use, it will trigger a building permit, and it will change occupancy type of the building, and that will trigger the proof of parking to be installed. Again, number five continued. In the event the proposed parking does not support the proposed use of the property, the owner shall enter an across-parking agreement with the adjacent site prior to issuance of building permit. So, just in case that, as they take a look at the site plan, and the parking does not work as proposed in the proof of parking, there's another mechanism to go talk to the adjacent property owners, see if you can do a cross-parking agreement with them. We didn't want to limit it to just that one option, because there's a lot of more due diligence that would have to occur to ensure that that parking works. But, from conceptual level, engineering, staff, and everyone's looked at the proof of parking, and from a high level, it looks like it works. But, we wanted to have another option in there. Number six, in the event parking complaints are received, the applicant shall work with city staff to address park concerns in a timely manner. At this time, we've not received any parking complaints, so that's why we feel supportive of keeping the stalls as is at a hundred and fifty-six on site. Number seven, the uses in underlying zoning district as permitted and/or accessory uses shall be allowed in addition to specific uses in the approved plan to unit development. This is a condition we're trying to start carrying here, because a lot of the planned unit development is previously limited to uses to what's in the planned unit development. We want to provide the opportunity to under, use underlying zoning district in addition to that. And that is the last one. I also want to state that we did publish this in the, in the local newspaper. We did not receive any comments or any emails from any surrounding property owners. With that, I believe the applicant is here. If they have any questions, I can stand for your questions as well. And thank you for allowing me to fill in for Kevin.
Nice work. Thank you, Mr. Moroslaw. Any questions for staff? Commissioner Anderson.
Have they stated whether they would rent this facility to outside groups?
In our conversations with the applicant commissioner, it sounds like they could rent it out, but they would make sure that the times don't offset with other uses at the church. So, the parking and everything would be supportive of that.
I have a question about the community asset, and I'm just thinking back when my kids played basketball, and we went to different community churches to, because they had gymnasiums. Is, that's just kind of a part of being a, that's, that's what the community asset is, right? That it's space that's available for youth basketball and other things like that.
That's correct, Chair.
Okay, thank you. Any other questions from commissioners? Seeing no more questions, we will open this up to a public hearing here at six forty-three. If there's anybody in the council chamber that would like to speak to this matter, you're welcome to approach the podium. And there does not appear to be anyone on the line, I'm not hi, if you can state your name and your address for the public record.
My name is Rocky Ranch. My home address is one eight nine oh one Jordan Trail, Lakeville, Minnesota, and this is my church home. I'm a layalter at Eden Baptist Church, and been there for about thirty-some years. This is the third time, we've come before the commission, and we want to say we appreciate your work and your efforts for the community. We're glad to be a part of the community, be able to help the community grow and be an instrument for the gospel of Jesus Christ. That's what we're primarily about. And as you can see, we built our building to a certain level, because that's all we could afford at the time. And we're finding out the addition is costing as much as the original building cost. After fifteen years, we were able to pay off the debt, and just felt this is a very important piece to make a church a home where you can play together and eat together, the entire church. And as was mentioned, we built the auditorium as a destination. We didn't see our congregation getting bigger than three fifty to four hundred, and we indeed have already spun off a couple of churches from our church, one in southern Burnsville, Resurrection Church, and one in Richfield, and we're in the process of starting a church down in Rosemont. And so, as we grow, we sort of ebb and wane in this facility. And so, we're looking forward to providing sure for the community as well as for our congregants. And we're just thankful to present this project and complete it. If you have any questions, I'd be happy to answer, but.
Thank you. Commissioner John.
I just wanted to say, this is wonderful, what you guys have put together as far as the letter, all the information, above and beyond, really. A lot of applicants don't go that far, and I want to tell you how much we appreciate that. That is above and beyond, it shows a lot about what your church is all about, so thank you.
Yeah, well, we're pleased to do that. Thank you, guys.
Anyone else in the council chambers that'd like to speak to this matter? And still no one on Zoom, so seeing none, I'll close the public hearing here at six forty-six. And then, we'll open it up to the commissioners for further comments, questions, or a motion. Commissioner Braddock.
Hello, I can make a motion to approve. Excuse me, recommendation is that the planning commission recommend to the city council approval. Okay, of the planned unit development amendment for a nine thousand eight hundred and thirty-three square foot addition to the existing building located at one three, one three Highway thirteen east, subject to the seven conditions of approval.
There's a motion? And a motion and second. We'll move this to a vote. All those in favor, all those in favor say aye. Any opposed? So, the motion carries, it's, and this will be presented to the this will be on the city council meeting on May sixth. And because this was approved unanimously, it'll be on the city council's consent agenda, which you probably know, you've been through this before, so. Thank you. Our next item is also a public hearing. This is the application of Connery Canines LLC for a conditional use permit, C U P, to operate a commercial kennel use at one two two five five Nicollet Avenue South. And presenting will be Connor Jakes, our associate planner. Mr. Jakes, the floor is yours.
Yeah, good evening, Mr. Chair, members of the commission. Great to be with you this evening. As Chair mentioned, the application before this evening is a conditional use permit to allow for a commercial kennel use at one two two five five Nicollet Avenue South, which is shown on screen before you. The property is highlighted or outlined in yellow, and is one building as a part of a larger business park under a planned unit development. The specific tenant space that's proposed for the use is highlighted in white on screen before you. The site is currently Zoned B three, general business, and is guided for business, retail, and office in the twenty forty comprehensive plan. So, the site was developed in the early nineteen eighties as a part of the phased development, planned unit development along Nicollet Avenue South, and that building is one of the larger development area. The uses allowed within the P U D development area were intended for a mixture of office and warehouse uses, which was accomplished through the allowance of conditional uses in the B three zoning district, and then permitted uses in the I one district. So, that combination of uses to result in the mixture of office and light warehouse throughout that business park area. And then, again, the subject building was constructed specifically for an office and office warehouse, combination of uses. So, the proposal before you is for a houndstown business location, which does have locations nationwide. And the specific proposal is to utilize the existing fifty-four hundred square foot tenant space for the commercial kennel use. The applicant is proposing to provide a fully interactive dog daycare, boarding, and spa facility that provides for an average capacity of fifty-five to sixty dogs, and a total of thirty-six suites for overnight boarding. I will note, the applicant did note in conversations that they don't expect a full fifty-five dogs on day one, but operations would ramp up over time. And with that, I would just note that staff has proposed a condition that does allow the city council to place a maximum number on the dogs on site in case complaints are received. So, there's that flexibility in the event complaints are received related to the number of dogs on site. As noted, a conditional use permit is required, really to just ensure the proposed use is compatible with adjacent uses, properties, and in this case, adjacent tenant spaces, as the proposed space does share one tenant wall on the eastern side, as we'll look at on the site plan on the next slide. The applicant has proposed various proactive measures to negate any potential impacts on the adjacent tenants and other businesses within the property area. Included in those are sound dampening measures within all shared tenant walls, so that one wall on the eastern side. Odor mitigation through a regular cleaning schedule that employees are required to follow, and a specialized H V A C unit to negate any potential odor impacts. In addition, I would just note that the applicant is required to obtain a kennel license through the city clerk's office and meet the standards of the license that are in city code. The site plan is shown on screen before you. To walk through the site, the site entrance is at the north part here. Guests would be greeted into the lobby area, which is as far as the customer would go. Customer interactions generally average about five minutes just for pickup and drop-off, so it's a pretty quick process, and we're turning over cars pretty quickly, so parking doesn't become an issue. Within this general area is the spa facilities, offices, restrooms, just kind of general business operations. And then, these four areas aren't intended for play areas for the dogs, and then the overnight suites surround the perimeter of the tenant area. And then, that one shared tenant wall is on the eastern side here. The northern wall has parking to the north, to the west is a drive aisle, and then to the south is the rear of the building where a parking area is as well. Terms of parking, the use is not specifically listed within the parking schedule, so it follows the general commercial standards of five spaces per one thousand square feet. City code in this case would require a minimum of twenty parking stalls, which the applicant is providing. Seventeen customer stalls are provided on the northern part of the site here. And then, staff parking is provided in the rear of the building, which would be the remaining three stalls, which is shown in orange on screen before you. In terms of planning considerations, the proposal does meet the requirements of the city code. Again, provided the applicant secures the kennel license through the city clerk's office. The proposal does meet the findings for approval of a conditional use permit, and aligns with the planned unit development for the site. And the proposal does meet the intent of the zoning ordinance and the comprehensive plan. With that, staff does recommend that the planning commission recommend to the city council the approval of the conditional use permit to allow commercial kennel use at one two two five five Nicollet Avenue South, subject to the eight conditions of approval. Condition one, the conditions of the previously approved planned unit development shall remain in full force and effect. Condition two, if nuisance complaints are received, the city council may amend this conditional use permit and establish a maximum number of dogs. Condition three, no outdoor waste or storage shall be permitted. Condition four, the applicant shall obtain a kennel license prior to onsite business activities beginning. Condition five, all dogs shall be, should say, leashed when being transported in and out of the facility. Number six, the applicant shall be in compliance with the standards listed in city code Title six two fifteen J. Condition seven, no exterior signage may be installed without the issuance of a permanent sign permit. And condition eight, all kennel-related activities shall occur within the principal structure. With that, the recommendations on screen, staff's available for any questions, and the applicant is in attendance as well.
Thank you, Mr. Jakes. Any questions for staff from commissioners? I think Commissioner John, you had your hand up first.
Well, thank you, Chair. Quick question is, had you reached out to the business owners surrounding? I know there's a restaurant right there, so.
Yeah, Commissioner John, we actually worked with the applicant and had them contact all the adjacent owners, as well as the property owner, and they didn't receive any concerns or anything from adjacent owners, rather support, actually, so.
Oh, good deal.
Yeah.
Good, thank you.
Commissioner Hamilton.
Is there any outdoor area for the dogs? Strictly inside?
That's correct.
Okay.
I have a question. You said the applicant is proposing sound dampening. What is, do you know what, what is that? Is there specifics to what that means? I'm just curious.
Yeah, Mr. Chair, there are specifics that were included in the narrative. The applicant might be able to talk more to that, but I believe it's related to the insulation within the walls that dampens it more than a normal kind of wall would, I guess.
Got it.
Yep.
Good enough, thank you. Commissioner Braddock.
I assume because they're, they're proposing sound dampening, that that would be inspected?
Yeah. Commissioner Braddock, that's correct. As part of the building permit process, our plans reviewer would ensure the plans meet that, and then ensure the building inspector kind of reviews that on-site for installation to ensure it meets code requirements, and then what was proposed as part of the building permit.
Any other questions from commissioners? Seeing none, we'll move this to the public hearing. Open it up for the public hearing, I should say. It is six fifty-five P. M. If there's anybody in the council chamber that would like to speak to this matter, you're welcome to approach the podium, and please state your name and address for the record.
Tony, Tony Connery, and my address is nine seven seven nine one ninety-eight Street West in Lakeville. And, excuse me, a little distracted today, apparently. My wife and I have been looking forward to figuring out a business to open for a while. Came across this franchise and have vetted it out pretty healthily. We're obviously dog freaks on the side. We have seven labs at the cabin up north during the, during the summer, so feel like we already run a dog daycare. But, through the efforts of the franchise that we partnered with and the location being a little, really fitting the, the use case for them. I wanted to speak to the sound portion, because that is definitely a part of this that comes up in every conversation. Don't quote me on the construction materials, I can get you exact specifics if we need to, but there's three different layers that go in, and the decimal reading on the other side has been more than suitable for over fifty locations nationwide. Some in office locations kind of similar to this. One of the reasons this particular unit suits us so well is there's only one shared wall, and the external side is, the rest of it is the drive space, so it should be not an issue. There are ways we can do sound testing, kind of through construction process if it's required. We do have another franchisee in another state that had to do that, so we can if necessary. So, with that, we look forward to hopefully joining the city here, being part of the community, and also partnering with some other local businesses, including the restaurant down the street, which we were at with our, the building owners just the other day, so. Questions from the group?
Welcome, by the way, and thank you for your application. Questions or comments from the commissioners? Commissioner Anderson.
I worked on a project where we needed to do some sound deadening, and they simply, we constructed pretty much the way they're talking about here, and it works.
Awesome.
As long as there is air between the two walls that you put, put up, it makes a big difference.
Yeah. Great. Any other questions or comments for the applicant? Thank you.
Thank you.
Anybody else in the council chamber wish to speak to this matter? Seeing none, and there's no notice from wait a second, there is a notice. Still nobody on Zoom is the message from the panel. With that, we'll close the public hearing here at six fifty-eight. And then, we'll move it to commissioners for a comment or a motion. Commissioner Timmerman.
I'll just comment, thanks for coming to Burnsville. I mean, you had options in your home city, so bring it up, bring it up across the board, I really appreciate that. I think it's a cool project, and probably filling a need in this community, so thank you for that. But that'll move to approve.
Can you can you read the recommendation, just to make it formal?
I suppose I could. I will move that the planning commission approve staff's recommendation that the planning commission recommend to the city council the approval of the C U P to allow commercial kennel use at one two two five five Nicollet Avenue South, subject to the conditions we heard about this evening.
Okay, there is a motion, is there a second?
Second.
Motioned and seconded, we'll move this to a vote. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? So, this motion carries unanimously, and this will also be presented at the city council meeting on May sixth, twenty twenty-five. Thank you. Next item on our agenda, item number five, this is review land sale proposals for alignment in the twenty forty comprehensive plan. And presenting will be Mr. Travis Bistado, our deputy community development director. Welcome, and the floor is yours. Welcome, and the floor is yours.
Maybe. Mike, help. Mr. Chair, Commissioners, good evening. My name is Travis Bistado. I'm the new Deputy Community Development Director, and as opposed to Deb, today is my first Planning Commission meeting. Versus Deb, I think this is 194, if, if the numbers are correct. Well, thank you for having me. I look forward to working with you all in the, for the immediate future here. Thanks, Mike. So, my first item here before the Planning Commission is largely administrative in nature. Minnesota State statute requires that all municipal land sales are reviewed by the planning, the local planning authority to confirm that the end use is in alignment with the existing comprehensive plan. And the City Council has provided direction to city staff to sell two city-owned properties, 911 140th Street West and 14751 Portland Avenue South, I believe. Yes. So, our first property, 911 140th Street West, is the former fire station location. It's located basically across the street from Costco. The, the site is currently vacant. The former fire station has, was demolished a number of years ago. We submitted a solicitation earlier this fall to have the property redeveloped, and we have a buyer. Costco is interested in relocating their current fuel station facilities to this new location. The property is guided mixed use in our existing 2040 comprehensive plan, and like I mentioned, the purchaser intends to relocate that fuel station for better customer service in that new location, and the motor fuel stations are permitted conditional use within the mixed-use district. The next property is 147 Portland Avenue South. It's currently a vacant parcel. Interestingly, it was acquired in 1989 by the city for use as a potential fire station, but the fire state, Fire Department has determined that location won't meet their needs and no longer has a, has a use for the site, so the council has directed staff to attempt to sell that parcel as well. This property is guided low-density residential in our current plan, and we have a developer, Hampton Companies, who is interested in developing the site with low-density residential, which would consist of 14 townhome units. So, the recommendation from staff is that the Planning Commission make a motion finding that the proposed land sales are consistent with our 2040 comprehensive plan. And with that, I am happy to stand for any questions.
Thank you for your presentation. Are there any questions from commissioners? Commissioner Anderson.
Is the cell tower on the former fire station site part of the sale, or does the city keep that?
Mr. Chair, Commissioner, it is part of the sale, so we would convey that part of the parcel to Costco.
Commissioner John.
Thank you. Welcome to the, to our great committee, commission. One question I have, the former fire station site is almost three acres. That's all going to be a fuel station? Is there going to be more there?
Mr. Chair, Commissioner, at this point, we have a very kind of low-level or high-level site plan. They're intending to combine the two parcels where the old Pumpkin Patch daycare is to provide for staff parking, and then there'll be an access through there for customers to access the fuel station pumps. So, we'll actually be using those two parcels that are located there. But they are anticipating adding a number of additional fuel pumps. I want to say it's nine to their existing capacity, so it'll be a little bit larger fuel station than what currently services Costco.
Commissioner, Commissioner Hamilton.
So, to clarify, the Pumpkin Patch site is going to be employee parking? Didn't we address this once before? And...
Well, we don't have a plan, you know, we don't see anything in front of us.
Yeah, we can, yeah, we, we're really here just to say, is this, is this consistent with the 2040 plan? That's, that's, that's really the purpose of today's meeting.
Mr. Chair, Mr. Chair, Commissioners, like you were saying, this is a very early step in the process. We still have to move forward with the purchase agreement process. Then we'll have a development application, and that will come before this body as well.
I have a question. Any sense for the timing of these development applications coming through? I know you don't control that, but just any...
Mr. Chair, we anticipate the purchase agreement probably will come before the City Council, maybe in early May, and a development application, I would say, kind of maybe late May, June. We did have a community meeting with regards to the 911 Costco property last week, and in talking with the Costco representatives, they anticipate they could build this out within four months' time. So, I think it, it could be done perhaps before the end of the year.
Wow. Great. Commissioner John?
You might feel like we're hazing you on your first day.
No, that's okay.
There's supposed to be a traffic light going in there. Is that correct? That's still on, on course to happen?
Mr. Chair, Commissioner, that is part of the purchase agreement, is that Costco would provide the traffic light for that intersection. Yep.
Thank you.
Commissioner Timmerman.
The project at Portland and Southcross, you said 14 twin home, is that 14 buildings or 14 units, seven buildings?
Mr. Chair, Commissioner, it's 14 units. Yep. So, I can't remember the number of buildings. Eight? Nine? There we go, seven buildings.
Okay. And just curious of what's going to fit there, so. All right, thank you.
So, there's no public hearing, and so we can ask questions, and then we can make a motion. So, if someone's ready to make a motion, we can do that, or if there's more questions. I'm not trying to limit questions, but just procedure-wise. Commissioner Braddock.
I'll just ask my question because I'm involved in housing. Given the existing shortage of housing and inventory, do you have any idea what kind of price point these townhomes are going to be at, or do we have any information on that?
Mr. Chair, Commissioner, I, we had a community meeting on that project as well, and the developer was a little reluctant to get pinned down on a price point, but we think it's going to be in the 400s. So, not affordable levels.
Thank you.
Commissioner Anderson.
The property on Portland seems to fit well with the, you know, the twin homes, with the townhomes, single-family townhomes, if you want to call it that, behind it, so I think it's, that one's very appropriate.
I agree. Yeah, I think both of these are very consistent with the 2040 comprehensive plan, and it would be awesome if someone made a motion in that regard.
Seeing as you're prompting us, I, I don't personally like either project, and so I'm excited to talk more about the details down the road, because they're not in line with decisions this body has made in the past. But as far as they are related to the 24 comprehensive plan, there are no concerns. So, I will move to, let's see, move to approve this recommendation to the City Council, the finding that the proposed land sales are, in fact, consistent with the goals, policies, and objectives of the city of Burnsville's 2040 comprehensive plan.
So, there's a motion. Is there a second? Seconded, seconded?
Second that, yeah.
Thank you. Seconded by Commissioner John, and we'll take a vote. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? So, moved. Thank you. The next item on our agenda is updates, and I'll ask, Commissioners, any updates? Staff?
Yes, we got a couple things for you tonight. At the City Council's last meeting on April 8, the previous two application review, we reviewed were approved. The first one was the conditional use permit for Eric Dunn to construct a garage accessory structure over 500 square feet at 3430 David's Court was approved. And the second one was the conditional use permit for a drive-through at 12901 Aldrich Avenue was also approved. And the other big announcement we have, this is Deb Garros's final meeting as a, as an employee of the city of Burnsville. Deb has worked for the city for over 20 years. We're going to deeply miss her wealth of knowledge. Her institutional knowledge is beyond words, and so we're going to miss that, but we wish her a very happy retirement, and I don't know if anyone else on staff has anything else to add, but...
Mr. Chair, Commissioners, I would just add that I really appreciate Deb's ethic in terms of she is more, in my opinion, in the five months that I've known her, she's, she takes more of an educator approach rather than a regulator approach, and she's always working to educate staff, including myself and, and other staff, but also our customers, on why the code exists and how to utilize the code, and I, and I really appreciate that, in addition to her thoroughness and the quality of work that she does. She is leaving a legacy of incredible projects that she's worked on for the city of Burnsville that will continue to work on and really has been an asset for the city. So, we're, we're very fortunate to have her, and we'll, we'll miss her dearly, but congratulations to her.
Thank you. I did want to come before the, before the commission, just to say thank you for all of the years of really working with a great commission. I have worked with a lot of different commissions and councils over my tenure, not just here at Burnsville, but as a planner, and it's really been wonderful here in Burnsville, especially the commissioners. You really care about the community. You know, you're looking for win-win, you know, situations for, you know, the business community and the residents, and just the support that you've had for our staff, and I think just the mutual way that we work together. You know, it's not like you're just stamping, you know, reports or things that come before you, and I think that really shows in the quality of the developments that we've had, and I sincerely just wanted to thank you so much for, for a great, great planning commission experience.
And a quick fun fact, Deb has been to 100, this will be 100, her 194th Planning Commission meeting at the city of Burnsville. So, I'd say thank you again for all your service.
She's got to stay until she gets 200.
Just short.
Might be another year though.
Mr. Chair, could I?
Oh, yeah, yes.
Thank you. I was nervous that this is the announcement we were going to get after seeing you acknowledged for your 20 years of service. Congratulations also on your 20 years of service with Burnsville. The, the interactions that I've had with you, Deb, have always been wonderful. I think that you've set a really good tone for all of this staff, new and old, as we've seen some kind of pass through the ranks over the last six, seven, eight years, however long I've been partnering with you. But I, I think that my, my view on the Planning Commission would be a lot different if you weren't a part of this whole process. So, thank you so much. Enjoy your retirement.
Thank you.
Commissioner John?
I want to follow up on that and say, you, you have been wonderful, and everything Mr. Bedow was saying, how much we've learned from you, and we really much appreciate your experience and your leadership through these, I mean, pretty much your leadership throughout these years, and thank you so much for the dedication you put towards the planning department here in Burnsville, because that is one of the biggest reasons why, you know, some of these projects have gone through as, as they have. You've been very diligent. You're very detail-oriented. I can't tell, I can't tell you much. I really appreciated your help and your mentorship throughout these years. Thank you.
Thank you very much. I appreciate that.
Commissioner Hamilton.
I might as well add on to this. I appreciate the detail of your presentations, and then being patient when sometimes I ask some of my wacky questions, because I'm trying to seek... And I do appreciate your understanding, your detail, and your patience.
Thank you so much. It's been a pleasure.
Yeah, thank you. Thank you, Deb, for all of your guidance and your experience. It's really been, it's been delightful, and so excited that you get to retire, and, and we will try to, try to get by.
And hopefully your agenda packets will be shorter, as well as presentations. Just saying.
Can we get a commission picture before we leave for the night?
Sure, that'd be great.
That'd be great.
Thank you. Any other updates?
Not that I have as.
Okay, I will entertain a motion to adjourn. Motion.
Seconded.
Motion and seconded. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Thank you, everybody. Have a lovely evening.